Good evening, everyone. I'm not starting the meeting yet. The administration needs a few more minutes, but I just wanted to explain that's where we're at. And as soon as they're ready, we will begin the meeting, which should be shortly. Thank you. [inaudible] Everyone, welcome to the Cranston City Council's special meeting of April 1st, 2025. At this time, I will ask the clerk to please take the roll.
Councilman Campopiano.
Here.
Councilman Bonanno.
Here.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Present.
Councilwoman Harroyan.
Present.
Councilman Andujar.
Present.
Councilman Ritz.
Present.
Councilman Traficanti.
Present.
Council Vice President Wall.
Here.
Council President Moreno.
Present. At this time, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the introduction of new matters before the council, being pursuant to Charter 6.03. The city council welcomes this evening Mayor Hopkins to deliver his budget message and to introduce the city's operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending on June 30, 2026. This is with respect to resolution adopting the operating budget and salary schedule for the general fund, the sewer fund, the insurance fund, and the capital budget for the fiscal year commencing again July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, and adopting the capital improvement program for the four succeeding years, an ordinance making annual appropriation for the city of Cranston for that same fiscal year, a resolution levying and ordering the assessment and collection of a tax on ratable real estate and tangible personal property pursuant to Charter 6.11, an ordinance fixing the date when taxes are assessed due and payable, and the date when unpaid taxes will carry a penalty. Those are referred to their committees as indicated in the agenda, and we have the schedule as well for the public hearings on the operating and capital budgets. And at this time, I will give the floor over to Mayor Hopkins.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I'd like to start out by thanking my team, my administrative team, most notably my Chief of Staff, Tony Moretti, Paul McCauley, my Deputy Chief, my inner staff of Zita McCauley, Gina Capuano, but most importantly, the members of my staff that helped put this budget together, most notably Tom Zidelis. And if you people get to know him and get to meet him, I suggest you strongly do that because he is one of a kind, but he is a statistical genius, and he's done an absolutely unbelievable job. So I want to give him all the credit in the world for helping me put this budget together. So again, thank you to my own team. And again, it hasn't been easy. We've been sharing a lot of responsibilities. I haven't had a secretary in four years. I think I'm the only city mayor in the state that does not have one, but we'll continue to work and do the best that we can. I want to thank the city council, Council President, and members of the council. This has been a much better working relationship than I had my first term. My door is always open, and we've taken advantage of that. We've tried to be articulate in discussing different things, and I personally want to thank you, and let's continue to do that to work for the people of Cranston. I also want to give a shout out to the school administration. I see the superintendent and their team there. Thank you for our conversations in looking at the budget, looking at the needs of our schools, and giving your input into this budget so that we can try to take care of the needs of our children for the future. This evening, I am once again very proud to report that the city of Cranston is fiscally strong. That is so because for the past four years, I am making sure that we, with the support of the city council, Cranston is a safe city for our residents and our businesses. Our economic development efforts are paying off, with new businesses continually coming in to invest in our city. We are bullish on investing in infrastructure to further enhance the quality of life of our residents. We continue to do projects throughout the city to make Cranston a better place to live. With that, in this budget that I will propose, we will strategically invest in our roads and our bridges. We will improve our business, small business environment, by revitalizing our neighborhoods in the likes of our wonderful Knightsville streetscape, Patuxah Village, and our recent investment in the Park Theater District. Finally, we begin to invest in long-term stormwater projects, which have plagued our city over the years. We'll continue to build new and improved recreational facilities, and we will provide funding for our much neglected fire station facilities. We will also begin to deliver to the taxpayers a massive investment in our school building facilities. Collectively, these investments will make Cranston a better city for our children and all residents while delivering exceptional services. Fiscally, I found that early in my administration that Cranston suffered from significant financial deficiencies that needed to be addressed. When I took office, we were faced with structural spending deficits and unfunded reserves of millions and millions of dollars. At the same time, we were challenged just four short years ago by the devastating impacts of the COVID pandemic. You will recall that I faced these challenges head-on. Early on, I trimmed city government by implementing an unfortunate but necessary workforce reduction of 24 positions. We have since seen our community emerge from these difficulties. The people of Cranston have since re-engaged. Our financial health has now rebounded, and community pride continues to soar. However, with this success, it is important to be reminded that Cranston no longer qualifies as a distressed community. A pat on the back. We all did a good job to make Cranston better. But with that is a double-edged sword. We lost out on significant funds because our city and its residents have experienced fiscal improvement. This alone has resulted in a loss of over $2.7 million in state aid to the city. On top of that, the state has reduced their contribution in the pilot funds, the payment in lieu of taxes to Cranston, by over $1.6 million in the past three years. As they continue to build and modernize the prison facility, they knock down buildings and take away pilot money from our city, as we continue to service them with mutual aid. Like all municipalities, we were fortunate to have the American Rescue Plan to help us during some of our nation's darkest times. I recognize that those funds were to be used only as a bridge to see us out of the economic downturn of COVID. Over the past few years, my team and I planned ahead and pulled us out of the city's dependence on those one-time funds. We did this with only a nominal tax burden on our taxpayers over the last four years. I believe that you will agree that I made some very tough decisions, but they were also the right decisions for our residents. Our bond rating agencies continue to agree in that our most recent ratings were reaffirmed, double A plus by Fitch, and similar ratings by Moody's and Standards &amp; Poor. Although we are in fiscally sound shape, we still have significant financial challenges. I suppose that we will always will. It's my job, the job of the city council, and that of the school district, to still deliver excellence while not overburdening our residential and business taxpayers. Today, the greatest fiscal challenge that we face is inadequate state funding of our schools. And I repeat, inadequate state funding of our schools, especially in light of many of the unfunded state mandates that are thrust upon our administration. We are also facing rising employee health and pension costs. As a city, we must also find ways to fund tens of millions of dollars to pay for the new schools and the school facility improvements that our voters overwhelmingly approved in the recent years. And I supported those bonds very strongly to make sure that our kids had new schools to go to. The essence of the budget that I offer you this evening is simple.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not starting the meeting yet. The administration needs a few more minutes, but I just wanted to explain that's where we're at. And as soon as they're ready, we will begin the meeting, which should be shortly. Thank you. Everyone, welcome to the Cranston City Council's special meeting of April 1st, 2025. At this time, I will ask the clerk to please take the role.
Councilman Campopiano.
Here.
Councilman Banano.
Here.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Present.
Councilwoman Haroyan.
Present.
Councilman Andujar.
Present.
Councilman Ritz.
Present.
Councilman Traficanti.
Present.
Council Vice President Wal.
Here.
Council President Moreno.
Present. At this time, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the introduction of new matters before the council, being pursuant to Charter 6.03. The city council welcomes this evening Mayor Hopkins to deliver his budget message and to introduce the city's operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending on June 30, 2026. This is with respect to resolution adopting the operating budget and salary schedule for the general fund, the sewer fund, the insurance fund, and the capital budget for the fiscal year commencing again July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, and adopting the capital improvement program for the four succeeding years. An ordinance making annual appropriation for the city of Cranston for that same fiscal year. A resolution levying and ordering the assessment and collection of a tax on ratable real estate and tangible personal property pursuant to Charter 6.11. An ordinance fixing the date when taxes are assessed due and payable and the date when unpaid taxes will carry a penalty. Those are referred to their committees as indicated in the agenda. And we have the schedule as well for the public hearings on the operating and operating capital budgets. And at this time, I will give the floor over to Mayor Hopkins.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I'd like to start out by thanking my team, my administrative team, most notably my Chief of Staff, Tony Moretti, Paul McCauley, my Deputy Chief, my inner staff of Zita McCauley, Gina Capuano. But most importantly, the members of my staff that helped put this budget together, most notably Tom Zidellis. And if you people get to know him and get to meet him, I suggest you strongly do that because he is one of a kind, but he is a statistical genius. And he's done an absolutely unbelievable job. So I want to give him all the credit in the world for helping me put this budget together. So again, thank you to my own team. And again, it hasn't been easy. We've been sharing a lot of responsibilities. I haven't had a secretary in four years. I think I'm the only city mayor in the state that does not have one. But we'll continue to work and do the best that we can. I want to thank the city council, council president, and members of the council. This has been a much better working relationship than I had my first term. My door is always open, and we've taken advantage of that. We've tried to be articulate in discussing different things. And I personally want to thank you. And let's continue to do that to work for the people of Cranston. I also want to give a shout out to the school administration. I see the superintendent and their team there. Thank you for our conversations in looking at the budget, looking at the needs of our schools, and giving your input into this budget so that we can try to take care of the needs of our children for the future. This evening, I am once again very proud to report that the city of Cranston is fiscally strong. That is so because for the past four years, I am making sure that we, with the support of the city council, Cranston is a safe city for our residents and our businesses. Our economic development efforts are paying off with new businesses continually coming in to invest in our city. We are bullish on investing in infrastructure to further enhance the quality of life of our residents. We continue to do projects throughout the city to make Cranston a better place to live. With that, in this budget that I will propose, we will strategically invest in our roads and our bridges. We will improve our business, small business environment by revitalizing our neighborhoods in the likes of our wonderful Knightsville streetscape, Patuxah Village, and our recent investment in the Park Theater District. Finally, we begin to invest in long-term stormwater projects, which have plagued our city over the years. We'll continue to build new and improved recreational facilities. And we will provide funding for our much neglected fire station facilities. We will also begin to deliver to the taxpayers a massive investment in our school building facilities. Collectively, these investments will make Cranston a better city for our children and all residents while delivering exceptional services. Fiscally, I found that early in my administration that Cranston suffered from significant financial deficiencies that needed to be addressed. When I took office, we were faced with structural spending deficits and unfunded reserves of millions and millions of dollars. At the same time, we were challenged just four short years ago by the devastating impacts of the COVID pandemic. You will recall that I faced these challenges head-on. Early on, I trimmed city government by implementing an unfortunate but necessary workforce reduction of 24 positions. We have since seen our community emerge from these difficulties. The people of Cranston have since re-engaged. Our financial health has now rebounded, and community pride continues to soar. However, with this success, it is important to be reminded that Cranston no longer qualifies as a distressed community. A pat on the back, we all did a good job to make Cranston better. But with that is a double-edged sword. We lost out on significant funds because our city and its residents have experienced fiscal improvement. This alone has resulted in a loss of over $2.7 million in state aid to the city. On top of that, the state has reduced their contribution in the pilot funds, the payment in lieu of taxes to Cranston, by over $1.6 million in the past three years. As they continue to build and modernize the prison facility, they knock down buildings and take away pilot money from our city as we continue to service them with mutual aid. Like all municipalities, we were fortunate to have the American Rescue Plan to help us during some of our nation's darkest times. I recognize that those funds were to be used only as a bridge to see us out of the economic downturn of COVID. Over the past few years, my team and I planned ahead and pulled us out of the city's dependence on those one-time funds. We did this with only a nominal tax burden on our taxpayers over the last four years. I believe that you will agree that I made some very tough decisions, but they were also the right decisions for our residents. Our bond rating agencies continue to agree in that our most recent ratings were reaffirmed, AA+ by Fitch and similar ratings by Moody's and Standards &amp; Poor. Although we are in fiscally sound shape, we still have significant financial challenges. I suppose that we will always will. It's my job, the job of the city council, and that of the school district, to still deliver excellence while not overburdening our residential and business taxpayers. Today, the greatest fiscal challenge that we face is inadequate state funding of our schools. And I repeat, inadequate state funding of our schools, especially in light of many of the unfunded state mandates that are thrust upon our administration. We are also facing rising employee health and pension costs. As a city, we must also find ways to fund tens of millions of dollars to pay for the new schools and the school facility improvements that our voters overwhelmingly approved in the recent years. And I supported those bonds very strongly to make sure that our kids have new schools to go to. The essence of the budget that I offer you this evening is simple. The budget focuses on funding for our schools and our children. Funding levels on the city side are only to maintain the essential and excellent city services that our residents expect. You will see that this is a no-frills budget from the city side. On that side of the budget, we compromise approximately, I'm sorry, comprise of approximately 45% of the entire spending budget for the city. The bulk of the budget, over 55%, resides on the side of the school department. The city's operating budget that I present to you finds no new costly initiatives. This is an austere budget that frankly, my department heads probably won't be happy with. I'm not pleased to have to limit spending on our city departments, but I recognize the necessity of devoting all available resources to our schools and the children of this city. As city leaders, we need to do this as cost-effective and affordable to our taxpayers as possible. As I mentioned, we are committed to continue delivering top services for our citizens, including ongoing support for our public safety departments, our parks, recreation programs, and much more. We will do this despite some challenging times ahead, inflationary factors, and an ever-increasing pressure to spend more. This budget reflects the difficult decisions necessary for our long-term financial health. On the city side, I will control spending, and I ask that we do the same on the school side of the budget. Together, we can make Cranston better and stronger. All city department heads will be directed to manage their budgets while meeting my expected level of services to our taxpayers. Included in this budget, the city will, of course, fulfill contractual obligations and step increases for city employees. This budget provides for fully funding our required annual pension and other post-retirement contributions. In support of our schools, I am proposing to increase the city's contribution to the school department by nearly $2.3 million, $2,279,000 to be exact. This amount is nearly unprecedented and exceeds all increases provided to the schools in the last 15 years. This $2.3 million is in addition to the $1 million that I recently provided to our schools using the one-time opa funds. This funding is independent from the state school aid that is currently slated to increase by approximately $5.1 million or 6.73%, boosting it from $75.6 million to $80.7 million in school state aid. This support for our schools and city infrastructure represents essential strategic investment for the future generations of our city. This budget delivers all funds while ensuring reliable and affordable city services again to our residents. The $338.1 overall budget that I present to you this evening has a tax levy that I will propose a modest 2.57 tax rate increase on residential properties and a proportionate increase on commercial properties. This increase is to largely support our schools for the coming year. If adopted as proposed, the residential tax rate will be $13.96 per thousand, slightly up from this year's rate of $13.61. Commercial and industrial property will be $20.94 versus the current rate of $20.42. For example, the average value in Cranston as a household is $347,600. The raise with this tax increase would be about $122. In my eyes, our schools need it, our kids deserve it, and I'm willing to also kick in my share. The budget increases the tax levy to 3% from this year's budget. We need to be reminded that the city charter mandates that tax increases cannot exceed 3% of the prior year levy. As we are well aware, our neighboring communities, Warwick and Providence, are experiencing unprecedented fiscal difficulties resulting in much higher tax increases. I can assure you that through the prudent financial measures of my administration and the basic support of the city council throughout the years, our city's finances are strong and sustainable, and we all should be very proud of that. I do, however, help that we all recognize the need to fund our schools as much as we can. That's really what this budget is all about, the future of our city, the kids of our city. The budget that I present tonight will enable us to address the financial needs of our city while ensuring the delivery of essential services. We will persist in our commitment to serve our constituents effectively. This is a worthy financial strategy for our city that merits your support. I am dedicated to steering Cranston in a positive direction without imposing excessive costs on the taxpayers. We will invest in our infrastructure and enhance our visual appeal of our business districts to encourage visitors to come and shop and dine, engage with our local community. I will continue to attract larger-scale businesses to our city. This budget underscores my dedication to public safety with our police and fire department. With this plan, we will ensure that our streets and our neighborhoods remain safe. And to me, that's one of the reasons why people want to move to Cranston. We have the safest city, the safest community, the best police department and fire department in the entire state. The community pride that we witness daily is evident. As leaders of our city, we can share in that pride in our financial support, our unique quality of life here in our city. We can continue to support civic events such as parades, fairs, and festivals. This budget will continue to support these community activities. I extend my gratitude to those city employees that even in the cold of winter clear our streets and to those who maintain our infrastructure during the heat of this coming summer. Importantly, I appreciate all who serve and assist our taxpayers and residents every day as they engage with our local government at City Hall and various offices throughout the city, and certainly, to my pride and joy, our police and fire personnel. I have the privilege of witnessing firsthand how you make this city work for our residents. Our aim in crafting this budget is to ensure that the city puts our schools first to provide essential services and to safeguard our long-term financial health. This budget is my best effort to continue to keep Cranston affordable for all taxpayers, families, and businesses. I believe that this budget properly balances the needs of our schools where we continue to invest in our children. I thank you, Cranston, and as always, one Cranston, one heartbeat. God bless.
Thank you, Mayor Hopkins, for your annual budget message. And just a reminder to the public, the first Finance Committee meeting will be on Tuesday, April 8. We will have the initial introduction for the full council at 6 o'clock. 6:15 will be the Finance Committee meeting, and it will take place at Cranston East Auditorium. And we welcome the public to join us in that. The second Finance Committee meeting at this time is scheduled for April 12. And again, the public is welcome to attend. And please pay attention to the city calendar for any changes to the calendar for the Finance Committee and special council meetings relative to the budget. At this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Ayes have it. Good evening. Thank you.